Hello Chris.
How are you?
Have they been getting hurt?
Hey Brian.
What do you need?
There's a small subdivision currently under the nearby. There's all of them too, thank you. Home without a great project for that end. He configuring that on eight six. Living stones with small residential development. Currently. You have the room? Folks at YouTube streaming up in live. Just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything?
Ready for the holiday, sir? Sometimes seem to jump my act around this time of year. Playing in different roles but taking it pretty right.
Correct. Means do they, what we're proofing is what the plan has and what in law.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you. Do you have any?
I think it's.
Maybe you got a four black. Because. Wow. The omission should. They would be pick up the first shift. And results are best. Someone was. Where it's a need made is the.
And my neighbors will too.
My colleague says serving size three pieces and also three pieces of under seven calories.
You've got sixty, sixty calories a piece? You don't think it's more or less or? Wishful, wishful math. To get the small non-cried, I think it's.
If you ever looked at your performance report. It's Cirque Alert. Drinks, the flavor drinks, I don't know how big they were. And it said calories per serving zero, calories per container like ten.
Or if there's three servings, how is it possible to have zero?
Well, so wait, so how is per serving zero? Because the container had like ten. So that means if you have horrible servings, there's no calories, you're gonna drink the whole.
And it happens to be calories, three servings, you know, in a bottle.
You have zeros.
It's free in that.
Sure, just like the Florida.
Maybe it's like, well, maybe it's like twice the way the calories are in the box. I think that pays what that goes to. I'm opposed to set up these. I don't want to check these stuff because I set up these things. And I think Chicago more than. It's actually interesting, these things are very easy to see. And last week you were going through, so I said. We have to have. In some tasks, in some executions. I set up.
Yeah, yeah, good. I did too. Some brilliant figures because they didn't have. I can do this. We made a new work. English is a tricky one.
We finally came to seven seventeen, guys are ready to move on. Order at seven o'clock will be a pledge of allegiance at moments from military personnel.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No call, Mr. Bitler?
Here.
Uh, here. Uh, any citizens concerned recently? All right, it's not. Correspondents are none, and I do have police, so I can keep moving.
Thank you, David. First thing that I have would be the motion complaint that we had at the workshop meeting.
Did they leave?
They were here, I'm not sure what happened.
They, they did leave. Did not feel like they were gonna, time was gonna be well spent.
So you guys received an email from me with a synopsis of what I found through our, you know, CODI system and from what Officer Schlotman conducted on the Center with all the investigations. Do you guys have any questions for me? Do you want them?
I mean, well, one thing would be just now would be thought as if they're not here to tell them, but just if there's an issue, they just call you immediately, is that what?
Yes.
That's a conversation I just had with an outside.
So they?
Yeah, yeah, they know. The next thing I have on the agenda, we need to kind of be together. We have completed our background investigation on our top applicant. We are currently ready to move forward with the hiring process and I would request that the board would allow me to have an executive session later tonight to discuss it further.
Want to do that now? You're gonna just get your, you do it now?
What's the executive session topic? I mean?
You know it's about hiring. Why do you need to make it difficult?
Yeah, it's about hiring.
Well, that's a public issue.
No, personnel is not public.
I'm not talking to you, Mr. Breitstein, that's, that's a.
He never does.
Hold on a second. Is it something regarding the hiring, something, for example, you said you completed background investigation that you need to discuss about the background investigation, personal to this candidate?
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna assume if we, if we're moving forward, we already have that information. This is, in my opinion, another attempt to circumvent the public process.
You mean another attempt not to get your blessings on something, so you could be a choke ring?
So if it's, is that appropriate, General, or is this?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, let me give you the exact personnel executive session and perhaps Chief Rindby can, can let us know whether it is appropriate or not based or whether it meets the definition. Okay, if a personnel executive session would be an executive session to discuss any matter involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of performance, promotion or disciplining of any specific prospective public officer or employee or current public officer, employee, employer, appointed by the agency or a former public officer, employee.
I, I covered it.
It's for employment purposes.
Yes.
It is for employment purposes and something that is the, the type of matter that regarding the background investigation that would not be discussed in a public session.
Yes.
Can you be the else in your agenda besides that?
I do not. I would have then the hiring of public works crew members, which may tie into that as well. I've just started my soft background check.
Pretty much, it was the same, you're hiring someone, we'd like to hire someone.
Post-executive approved by the board, we would of course announce the names.
Well, then we'll just do all the later, you're to be here. That's all I have, thank you.
Board, in your packet is an updated monthly expenses report. And the treasure report, suragent report as provided at the workshop. I would ask the board for a motion, please, to approve the monthly expenses, treasure report, suragent reports presented.
Make the motion to approve the, accept monthly expenses, treasures report and suragent report. I'll say. I'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler?
Although, no.
Although, yes.
Okay, last piece on our board is a, asking for a request of motion to approve the 2025 advertised budget. As you are aware, we advertise the budget in November. It is more than twenty days since we've advertised the budget, it's available for the public for review. And so we are asking for motion seating to approve that budget.
Is it twenty days or thirty days?
It's twenty.
Twenty, it is twenty days, then if you want the section of second class.
No, I don't need that, I'll take, I'll take your word for it. When you say it, it's been advertised, was it put on the website?
He, he advertised, he made the paper.
No, the proposed budget, was it put in the website?
No, that's not the.
Not least of all.
When you, when you advertise something to, to, to expect the public to come to a township building and look at it, do you reasonably think that that's the best way to communicate the finances of the township? You believe that?
That's what we agree to, Bitler.
I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to you. I'm asking you whether you think that's the best way to communicate to the public.
Sir, I believe it is the appropriate way to inform the public.
I didn't say appropriate, I said best way. And once again, continue to dance around and not disclose what we're doing here.
As long as it's appropriate to close the draft budget.
No. Okay, first of all, I'm confirming thirty-two oh two B is the twenty day requirement. The advertisement is, under thirty-two oh two B is public notice by advertisement, once in one newspaper of general circulation of the township. That is the legal requirement of the second class township code.
If you have the proof of, give the proof of publication with you.
Let me take a look, see if I still have you.
I thought we got a copy of that. We got a copy of what was advertised. Do you not read your minutes or your emails, Mr. Bitler? Apparently not.
I don't have it here with me, but I know that it was.
Yes, it was.
So I only want to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five budget as advertised.
I wouldn't make that motion.
We have a second.
Let's have a discussion on that. I don't understand how.
We just made a motion.
I don't, and there's a discussion.
Time for discussion, there was a motion and a second, okay.
I want to repeat that, Jim, so we can all hear it up.
There was a motion and a second, and that is the appropriate time for discussion.
Okay, I don't understand how my colleagues, particularly you, Joy, can vote on a budget when you missed three out of the four meetings and showed up late for the fourth one. I, I encourage you to withdraw.
Mr. Bitler, I have a degree in business management. I know fully well how to deal with spreadsheets and how to understand those things. So maybe you better get your facts straight before you make a decision.
So you're refusing to participate in the budget process to get you on a vote on?
I had input into it.
When did you, when did you do that when you weren't at the meeting?
Just because I wasn't here doesn't mean I can't.
When did you do that when you weren't at the meeting?
Let the other discuss.
Yes, Christopher, I can read, so I can look at it without being my handheld, I'm like you. I don't need the public TV to do it.
All right, can I motion a second, sir? I'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler?
This budget is no good.
Why do you choose?
Although, yes.
Okay, sir, again, in your, in your packets, and there's also one that we did add this evening for the police. We were waiting on the final confirmation of numbers and everything else for that one. So those, that one's in the back of your printed packet tonight. There was also one that we sent to you earlier, hiring a public works crew member without the name presence. Those we presented to you in executive and, and of course, we can vote as we come out. I would also like to, again, bring to your attention motion to approve the establishment SMP database by Supervisor Rhodes. He very graciously offered to assist us in building a database. We currently work off of himself spreadsheet. That itself spreadsheet's practically eight to ten years old at this particular point in time. A database would be very, very helpful to us in bringing that, so there's something manual we can print out and send out reminders and do some other things that we cannot currently do. So again, I'd like to ask the board for their approval, to have him assist us in doing so. I would also note that with that, he would agree that number one, there'd be no reiteration for that, that particular work. And secondly, that at the end of that work, he would release any and all documentation that he had in the Excel spreadsheet back to the township.
And all of our residents' information will be.
Correct, that would be part of the Excel spreadsheet, yes.
And it would be kept secure and none of us will speak about.
Correct, that would remain on our server.
I told him I would be our guinea pig. That way, you have someone to test, you know, so.
I still have a question about this. So we, we voted on it on Thursday, of course, that it passed, is, is it? For the county that it voted on at the next meeting?
You can, you can bring it up for a vote again under parliamentary procedure.
I'd like to be incorporated in that. If you could pass on to Mr. Rhodes, that I'll, I'll be glad to assist him with that.
Well, that's nice. You can deal with both of us at once, isn't that what you're?
If I remember correctly, when the SMP ordinance was designed, it, it was designed with the three different type mailings, the three cycles, so you may have to go back and revisit that to eliminate that out of the process.
Yes, sir. I would actually tell you that in my brief conversation with Mr. Rhodes when we originally discussed this, the three different cycles that were originally established. I know when it first came out, I was one of those that immediately did it, and that put me actually out of cycle, because I was a year ahead. So that has become, based on how people have approached this, that has become very broken over the years. Again, I think that would be something that we would look to eliminate, is to do it all at once.
He's gonna, he's gonna build everything inside of the spreadsheet, whether it's.
I forgot the chocolate at that.
You're talking about twenty-two or three.
Needs to be revised.
Right, but we haven't gotten to that point, so till it's done, it could be six months ago.
Well, I mean, yeah, right now, the ordinance, if it's, the ordinance I'm familiar with is a standard DEP ordinance. And as long as it, as long as it stays within, within the requirements of DEP ordinance, fine, can modify it. But right now, we have something that is compliant.
I'll make the motion to approve the establishment of an SMP database by Supervisor Rhodes. With assistance from Supervisor Bitler.
A little second, let me see.
I'll call him, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler?
Yes.
Although, yes.
Okay, my next piece on the agenda, as I presented last week, resolution for reappointment zoning hearing board. Again, as part of our review, and I'll address this with our next one, the interest in vacant board positions. We discovered that the zoning hearing board expiration dates all end at the end of December of this year. In order to align it as it should be aligned, that needs to be staged and stepped. So to do that, what we recommended that we would put a resolution in front of you, and I already did it out in, in general terms here, so that Dr. Ray would be appointed for a one-year term. Mr. Wincen would be appointed for a two-year term. Mr. Keterakis for a three-year, Keterakis for a three-year term. And Mr. Haddock also for a three-year term. Mr. Haddock is the alternate. And that would then put us into alignment, so that next year in December, we will be looking at either the reappointment of Mr. Ray for a term, or we would be looking to replace him with somebody else in the following year. So again, I'd be asking for your approval to put that resolution in place that we realign the board.
Resolution twenty-four thirty?
That will be number thirty, yes, sir, if we approve that.
I can make a petition to you for the foundation twenty-four thirty, reappointment of the zoning hearing board members as.
Yes, sir.
Sure, France, I would be there. All right, I'll say, I'll call. Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler?
Yes.
Although, yes.
Thank you, board. All right, next item on the agenda this evening, letters of interest for the vacant board positions. I wanted to, I, I had some great youngins work done today by Ms. Collin. She and I went through all of our current board members and their expiration dates. Right now, what we have, the EAC has one vacant, vacant position available. The zoning hearing board has two alternates that are available, so that everyone is obviously clear on that. Those alternates, we probably need to step those as well, so that, you know, that experience is there. But again, we have two alternates there. There's also a vacant Gaja position, which would be for member, for a resident of Robinson Township. And then, of course, the, the annual vacancy board is, that's an annual appointment from my review, and that would have to be also letters of interest there as well. And then the last piece that we were looking at was the auditor's piece. I need to confirm with the, the election, the board of elections here in Brooks County, that the actual date for Mr. White's last, last election. Right now, I've not been able to confirm that, I've gone back in the database and, and a lot of my writing votes, which is somewhat challenging to read. So once I confirm that, I believe we are, I believe he is in compliance, however, I want to confirm that for you. So again, we have one, two, we have EAC, oh, excuse me, I also missed Park and Rec, or two vacant Park and Rec as well, and two, two zoning hearing board vacancies for alternates and the Gaja, and then the vacancy board itself. I just want to make people aware of that. I'd also like to ask that anybody who's interested in those positions to please provide a letter to the township, to the potential manager, which of course, I will show that to the board as they, as they come. All right, the final note, as you know, our, our RFPs closed. As I went in last Friday, my vote had been to download the majority of the information. It's substantial. Many of the documents are megabytes beyond what I could possibly send via email. So what I did do was to invite each of you, the board members, I think, I know I put an email out to all of you, explain the instructions that you would have, you'd be getting an email from Von Fire Penbid, which runs the program, and that you would be able to then link into those, and you'd be able to review all the RFPs on file. Not only were some of them quite large, the other challenge was, there were thirteen, I think, of the IT one alone. So we had quite a few of them for review. Again, they're out there for your review and, and your discussion as, as you would like to.
Okay, is there anything else? All right, I guess we have number seven five companies. Go ahead.
Nothing for Geiger Town. I believe you have our reports.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Okay. Do you do Sam Close, you probably do Sam Close?
Yep, the twenty-second.
Now, how long does that take?
Four to six hours, depending.
Most of the day?
It's, yeah.
Most of the day.
What time do you start?
Around three thirty, four o'clock-ish, and it's usually eight, nine, half in October. We try not to go past, like, nine.
Yeah, but the kids like it better when it's early now.
Yeah.
Because they get to see the farther lights and the horns and, I don't blame them. Thank you guys for giving that.
Thank you. All right, then we have the minutes, expenses and reports. I would even like to accept. We'll approve the minutes, expenses and reports that are in our possession.
All right, we'll make that motion, accept everything in our possession.
I will second that.
I'll call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler?
No.
Although, yes. All right, hi. I don't have anything for you this evening, other than a quick update we discussed at the workshop that, and attached to my report was the payment application and change order for the street work. I spoke to the manager at the Oregon Borough. The cost to them did go up slightly through the change order, and she is going to be presenting that to the Borough on January sixth. So expecting everything to go fine there, that would be back before you, it's your January rounding meeting. So take a look at it if you have any questions on that. That's all I have. Good, thank you. All right, solicitor in London.
Hey, there were three assessing appeals which were filed, two commercial, one residential. These were in our packets for the workshop meeting, and the board had instructed me at that time to calculate difference in tax revenues between assessed value and value suggested in the appeal in order to make an informed decision as to whether to intervene, because there's some cost in intervention, although it's not a high cost, because generally in these matters, the school district takes the lead. The millage, township millage is three point two five mils, the school district millage is thirty-three mils, so more than ten times the, the millage, so they have considerable more interest. With two of the assessment appeals, the school district, through their solicitor, has already entered their appearance and intervened in the appeal. Uh, with two of the assessment appeals, uh, the school district through their solicitor has already, um, entered their appearance and intervened in the appeal. Um, I als, I, um, contacted the county assessment office to find out what the valuation being advanced by the owners was at the time of the, uh, appeals to the board, to the county board. Uh, as, since the appeals to the court of common pleas that we received did not contain this information about what the, uh, what the amount that they were suggesting would be. It doesn't have to because the appeal is a, it's a de novo appeal. It starts from the beginning. So I received the appraisal reports for the two commercial properties. There was, uh, no, um, no appraisal report for the one residential property. Uh, and the calculations are in the memo that I, that I gave to the board. I'll just, uh, I'll just summarize them. The assessed valuation for River Run Meadows and Levens for import, pre, pre-appeal, the assessed valuation was one million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars, which translates to fair market value using the, the common level ratio. At four million, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, seventy-five dollars. The assessed valuation post-appeal to the assessment board, which is still being appealed from as not enough of a reduction, is one million, five hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Which using the common level ratio factor of two point seven five from the state, translates to a fair market value of four million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty. The appraiser, the appraiser opinion of fair market value for River Run Meadows is two million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which would translate to an assessed valuation of eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Um, at the township tax rate, at the three point two five mils, township taxes would be, at the current, uh, valuation set by the county assessment board. Uh, it would be five thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and five cents. At eight hundred and nineteen thousand, uh, that would be two thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. The difference is two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents per year in taxes. Uh, Green Hills Corporate Center, we arrived at surprisingly the identical result as to the difference in taxes to the penny. Um, assess, their assessed valuation pre-appeal was, uh, eight million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, translating to a fair market value of twenty, of just over twenty-three million dollars. And they, uh, the county had set, had reduced the assessment to seven million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, which translates to a fair market value of approximately twenty-one point six million dollars. The appraiser opinion of fair market value is nineteen million, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, which translates to an opinion of an assessed valuation of seven million, ninety-eight thousand dollars. Uh, at seven million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, the current assessment, the taxes are twenty-five million, or twenty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and maybe cents. At, uh, seven million, ninety-eight thousand dollars, taxes are twenty-three oh sixty-eight fifty. Again, the difference is, uh, two thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty cents in taxes. Uh, the residential, uh, residential appeal, uh, the school district has not entered its appearance. The assessed valuation is two hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, the assessment was unchanged by the appeal. Uh, the owners have further appealed. The property now pays eight hundred twenty, uh, dollars and thirty cents in township taxes, uh, per year. So the decision really is, do you, do you consider it worth intervening over the amount in the two commercial appeals? I would not recommend intervening in the residential.
Which is just over five thousand, correct? We'd standard lose five thousand if they're one hundred percent accessible.
Right, that's, that's correct.
And your, your fees to intervene would be what?
My fees to intervene would be, I mean, uh, first of all, the filing to intervene as a one paragraph, nearly an intervention, takes me fifteen minutes to prepare that. So.
And what evidence do you think we might need? What would be the cost of that?
Uh, the school district would be taking the lead, so we would be merely attending to observe and have a seat at the table in negotiations. I, I would not.
But your, but your letter here says that since the school district already did their intervene, you really don't have to do anything because if they win, we all win.
That, that's correct. I mean, the only reason to intervene in lower commercial appeals in these cases is to have a seat at the table in negotiations. It's not necessary.
And why do it? Which would save us money anyway.
Okay, okay. The only thing you have, President, is writing in one paragraph.
The district looks out for themselves, which there's, there's a mutual identity of that, but it's always good to have a quite competent representative there.
We pay, some of us pay more taxes than what these commercial properties want to pay in taxes.
I mean, I look at it as the school district did it.
I'm sorry, that's bizarre. Oh, yeah, no, I agree, but the community needs to understand that they're, these people are asking for lower taxes and they're corporate. And yet, some of us are paying taxes as much, if not more, than what they want to pay. So, yeah, it's a necessary thing.
So, I mean, I would look at it as the school district did it, and we're good.
The school district has.
Yeah, the real criteria, Joy, is the fact that we're spending more time on services for that.
Harold, we had that discussion.
Then we're collecting.
We had that discussion.
Making revenue.
Before they came in and we had no choice in it. It is what it is. Right, there's a, there's a uniformity in taxation. Right, so it is what it is.
So, all right, so we're not doing it anymore. School district did it. Anything else to discuss?
Uh, that, that's all I have. I mean, we'll have an executive session on the, um, the Betler versus Robeson litigation.
All right, Pam.
I have nothing to report since, uh, the, uh, workshop meeting, other than we had a small, a small meeting yesterday. We treated some of them, and that.
They're quiet.
People don't think that.
You can cut trees down once you see the road, you know?
Why are you surprised? If there's a chainsaw in the truck, it's, it's a possibility.
Nothing new for Park and Rec or EAC as well, any business?
Newsletters are on there because we could potentially use emails to send out newsletters from the database that Supervisor Rhodes built.
Yes, ma'am.
And it simplifies what we have to do.
Well, we can go in the executive now. What do we want to do first? Do we want to do?
If, I might suggest we could do the two heartwritings first. That way we could release both chief and our public works supervisor, Ms. Collin.
All right, and we'll go in the executive session at seven twenty-seven.
And then folks, the live stream on YouTube continues.
Yes, sir.
If you need me to stick around.
People are just scared. I, I read them so.
I don't want to scare you.
Yeah, if you want to ask.
Come on down, and then he needs to.
Yeah. Oh, the lights.
Not at all. I got about half.
Running out of days, Tom.
I'm running out of energy. I fixed another, like, ten streams today.
Yeah.
Just playing a little.
Did, did you say lights?
Yes, lights.
So how is the lights?
Yes, we're, we're getting them. So we pull the information, we'll talk to the signal contractor and see if they'll come out and start running their tests and make sure they're operating per design.
Yeah.
But like I said, we're talking to some other folks.
Don't do nothing for the benefit of their cause.
I know.
I know.
I question shop and stuff.
But that would do nothing.
If anything, if it was done.
I would dump whatever traffic.
Did you get in to see Burks for his Christmas?
And, uh, because that is going to be a.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
I do, I do a big show every year.
I provide about half of the electric and all the speakers. I've been on the committee for twenty years. But everything you heard was through my speakers. I don't provide the mixers and the other stuff.
Any more.
Uh-huh. But all the, all the sound. All the, uh, equipment that takes the electric and makes sound out of it, that's all.
And they do.
Yeah, I, I, they put it up and they take it down.
I'll give them the information.
A lot of those electric cables that were all over, most of those are mine. It was a good program. We, we actually canceled the fireworks because of the drought. We weren't sure we would, so we, we notified the, uh, the firework company, then we went to that laser company. And then they got the rain and the snow and everything else and the fire, and the, uh, they came back and said, you sure you want to not have this? And they, and they gave us the price, so we got, they did both of them.
That's honest, and it's not the only place.
I'm the only non-resident on that board. We have a follow-up meeting Thursday at two o'clock. And we always go over what was good, what was bad, what we can improve. So, yeah. Yeah, I, everything that was, uh, there was a couple pieces of mine up on the stage, but all the stage lights that were hanging, you know, online. The electric heads and all the equipment was mine. Um, yeah, but.
All right.
Yeah, I, I just rebuilt all that stuff, uh, this summer. That's what put me behind. But, yeah, um, they played music the week before downtown. It's one of the, on my speakers. So, so the big speakers up by the Y, up by the, across from the, uh, the municipal building. The, that big one and all, that stuff's all mine. Yeah, I, I said if they wanted to have, I, I offered that to Spark and Rec to any, and fire companies borrow it, uh, churches, uh, nonprofit groups. You know what I mean? And so I, I do that for, you know, yeah. Yeah, keeps me out of trouble. I'm also on, I'm an Alliance Club member. It's tomorrow night, so I take a small system to that for our, for our Christmas programs. And, uh, then on Thursday night, a Rotary meeting, um, on the first of Rotary. And, and also on the Historic Preservation Trust of Burks County. And we have, I think, eight properties. I hope that, um, one of them is the pine property over in Pike Township. Pine Farmstead. It's my eighth grandfather removed. Yeah, I've, it's.
It wasn't there.
My family has been in Burks County since. The early, early seventies. So, yeah, I've got the meeting on, on, uh, Thursday. I'm going to take a thumb drive. I took ninety pictures.
Oh, okay. Yeah, um.
Uh, I'll put that on a tablet, and I'll make that available to them.
Yeah, honestly, if you just want to put it back in my car and the truck's locked.
I don't know. Did you get by my place and see some of the lights up on White Bear Road? Why? Uh, my granddaughter is going to be home for a while, so my wife gets some, and she gets some, she gets the baked cookies. Okay. This is last year. And I get them.
Yes.
To help me put the final. Light, uh, the balls on the Christmas tree. We've been doing that for, uh. Come on.
American law, tis the season.
So I just put extra years on them. And, uh, this is my three granddaughters doing that. My oldest granddaughter's twenty-four. So. And my middle, that's my wife. She just was released from her surgeon yesterday. And then that's my youngest daughter and her daughter. And that's Kirsten with her oldest daughter, who's twenty-four, and her younger daughter, which is twenty-one. Yeah, I better find out now.
Yeah.
And they'll be baking my shit. Yeah, oh, we've been doing that forever. This is my Lions Club. I taped all the pictures for that. Oh, this is the pine farmstead. It's in Pike Township, right outside of here. You know, they just had the trees taken down.
Yep.
I donated money to get it down and cleaned up. This is not the original.
Yes, I.
Finally, you hear it. You have a stupid boot yourself. It's like, it's like every one of the fire alarms is wired to the other one. See, if one fires, they're all. This is finally J Mac seven found it in his basement. Second floor pool, it's moving down, and dripping into.
The house from Mike.
Yeah.
Down to the river. So later, it's, I have ten acres. All right.
Hey, I have a deer. Let me a couple of deer. Once I got them, I packed their head.
The speakers that you heard, I donated them to a Joanna furnace thirty-seven years ago. They didn't like the way they sounded.
Oh, good day.
So they took them all down and got new ones, and I asked them if they were to keep them. I don't want them, so. These, these people that were at Joanna furnace thirty years ago, and the reason they didn't sound her, wow. Was they were covered, they were filled with horse nests and beanas. So I, hornets nests and everything else, and also some bullet holes. So I patched, yeah, so I patched, I scrubbed them all up, painted and got new drivers. They're the ones, yeah. So anyhow, that's what you heard around, that's what you heard around that.
Computers.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is what, yeah, here's the company. Kind farmstead, yeah, and this is, yeah, we had musical, we had music festivals here, and I provided all the sound for that.
It would have been when it was dry.
It's fifteen acres.
But it was extremely dry. Cause it's too rough.
No, they haven't, we haven't held anything there since COVID. I can't get anybody to, I mean, I would, but I just can't get the help. This is the pool in the backyard with our, my wife up in the hospital again. Yeah, yeah. She was in the hospital during our wedding anniversary, you know? And then this is, this was our, um, sixtieth class reunion. And she didn't make it. She was in the hospital with all these our class members. Yeah, I got a knee replaced. Oh, the, uh, the Burks County Quilt Guild that had the show up at, uh, Leesport.
Right.
That was all my sound equipment.
My boss, yeah.
My wife used to belong to it, and they asked me to do it, so I provided them a bunch of speakers and microphones and put it around for that. Also on the EAC. That's, that's Kirsten's house. Win's, Win's wife, my daughter. And this is the EAC when we, when we had the pickup of all the. So I take pictures, I got millions of pictures. So. And, you know, that thing we were handing it out went down here, and then this was my next event, it was up at the Burksboro High School. And these are the speakers again, and that was for the Halloween parade judging. So we do that. That, that was beautiful that night. That was the Halloween. That's my youngest granddaughter, that, that Karen's only daughter. She's my younger daughter. She, and then here's the speakers all put together, cleaned up.
Is our ladder truck somewhere else?
It was out getting a.
It's on Fifth Street, two twenty-two.
Yes, it's back. It was out for two, two or three days.
I happened to travel by there on those two or three days. But I wasn't paying total attention, I sold it.
Yeah, we started getting a.
There is nothing else with the twenty-four that can be a different company, isn't it?
Not in Chester, not in Burks, no.
So in other words, it was a fair bet that was your truck.
Yeah, yep.
How often do you use that truck?
I don't have the exact numbers. It goes out fairly often. Any AFA, anything like, anything that could be a truck fire. It was out, it came back yesterday and it was out last night. We had an AFA over near Doney's Garage. Doney's Garage, automatic fire alarm.
For spring. Oh, here's.
Did you hear about the electricity?
I made this out of junk.
Didn't know the electricity was out. I'm on a different grid in Los Angeles Township. I'm on the same grid as the fire company, and it only goes out like that, very far it goes out.
It ended up on her.
We brought down here.
I had this old, I had this old phone machine frame, so I put that on it. She's been, oh, she has had so much done to her.
I don't know, somebody terminated when they put new one in.
And this is what.
This is water.
But that's, that's back at the time. Oh, we made apple.
Get those trucks for our service now?
That's another thing we do together. We, we get bushels of apples. And get the crew together and make them. Yeah. That's, that's what you heard down there on the poles around town, these speakers. That was my final, and that's what you heard at the stage. So this was at the poles around town, and this was at the stage that's on. Oh, yeah, it took two truckloads. Here's, here's my driveway. That's my pole barn, no, it's not a pole barn, it's a three-story bank barn. And this is Thanksgiving, yeah. We, we, we eat. Food and family go together.
Electric is off, could do this.
It's a little bit better on enjoyers. Yeah.
When my power goes out, I go outside and switch on my power.
And Karen's.
I should do that, but.
I converted a gas generator to a propane generator. It is so nice.
She has told her boy, yes.
This is some of my Christmas stuff.
I actually thought about getting one of those kicks on.
Oh, yeah, my aunt has one of those. They're expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
It's all.
We, we get older. You don't wanna be out there wrestling a generator.
And I'm still an outsider in this township. The pit you have.
Bad storms and stuff trying to start a generator.
And it's so obvious. Yeah.
Let, let my mom have one. People in Tulsa.
That's this year.
It would make you say, she didn't even know it.
Yeah. I, the other year, I, I just used the lights that it came with. And the snowman was yellow.
Nobody wants yellow, so.
So I tore it all apart. So there's a light out, and I read too long this year. I have more to do down by the road. That's the heater system in the garage. Here's up around. Yeah, yeah, if you go, the school is above me on the left, if you go up the hill. Yeah. You know, that's, I have the backside of that to do. But I just, yeah, that's the barn, the house.
I have a lot of work on that.
Oh, yeah, here's down by the road. Yeah, I fixed, I fixed well over sixty strings of lights so far. And this is what we put up down at the burrow. Those are my speakers and my stuff. Yeah, oh. These are sixty pictures. Oh, yeah. You know. This was supposed to be rotated between Union and the Burrow and Robinson. The Christmas program. It started out at Union, then it went to Burksboro. Then Mascaro got involved and Burrow never, never. To rotate between the three of us, and it never did. So anyhow, this will go on a thumb drive, and I'll give you a committee on, on Thursday.
Organizing the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, when I go around, I take a picture of every stamp. So we know who showed up and what they did. Now, this is one of the ex-board members. He and I go way back. The old manager of Robinson is the one that got me on board, that was Charlie Ryan. Yeah, so Charlie Ryan, he lived behind me at school, but he got me to form the planning commission. Yeah, so anyhow, who's, who's looking for me? Oh, send money to the holidays. The USO, I give money to that, and it's like, now they send me every holiday. They want me to give. That, and Red Cross, I give, USO, the Burks County Blood Bank, I gotta give them money again. Yeah, so anyhow, it's fine. Yeah, so anyhow, with my wife by me on her feet, I hope I can get around. I'm also on some Burksboro committees and the office in township history and other stuff. Paul being funny. I don't know if you know Paul Shirey.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. He said he shot a drone down, that's. Yeah, go away. What are you doing? Be nice to fat. Be nice to fat people. Uh, one way, they might save your life. He, he has a different wit about him. Uh, he remembers some puzzles. I did enough of that. So it's here. Yeah, I, I buy a lot of stuff off of Facebook Marketplace. That's how I got a lot of my sound stuff. I bought a, a used woodlay, and I gotta get it set up. I'm gonna start turning some things, while I still can. I'm getting to the point where I can hardly. What? I don't know what, I don't know what I'll be making next. I, I wanna get some more of these Singer. No, that was only ten, look at that. They dropped it from a hundred down to ten. I wouldn't mind having that, but sometimes you gotta ask my heart. But what I, what I do is I'll do, same as my wife, I'll strip it all down and, and put a new top on it. Yeah. Here's. I didn't know we had too many things. Who's the other company for the vacancies? What? I'm, I'm, I'm like, if it's somebody decent, I might. Yeah. Yeah, I had my, my right knee replaced. Now my left knee is saying, me, me, me.
Is that to be off now?
Oh, here it is, okay. Yeah. Here's what I was making, and then she said, no, I'd like to have that in the house. That's all junk lumber. So I, I milled it, got it glued. Eight coats of spar marge, same as you cleaned it up. And now it's in. That's the kind of stuff I like doing. I like taking junk and making something out of it. So now it's in our dining room with the vermi.
It's a good useful piece of furniture, yeah.
I, I, so far that's about the sixth top I've made so far. Yeah. I think I lived to a hundred and fifty because.
Is that shared?
I, the sign. That's it all. It all screws together. I made it so the bottom can be filled with water. And that comes apart in three pieces. Your T is in the middle, and these two outlets can be unscrewed, and they can be all filled with water for weight. And then this just sits in the middle, and you can turn it if you want it to the case, and it's double sided. Yeah, I made that about three years ago. Regular session at seven, I try to keep busy. Detective session, we talked about some personnel issues, and also the issue of the work you have in township. Now, Rich, you wanna?
Yes, sir. So I have two resolutions. The first of those, the seating would be, first, this conversation was with regard to public works vacancy that we have. The township would be interested in making, sending an offer of employment to Richard Fiz, as a public works crew member, starting compensation at twenty-six oh four per hour. Tension upon the fact that he would have his CDL be reinstated or re, re-engaged here prior to his hire date, which we would assume to be roughly the end of this month, the end of December, sorry, December. So that would be resolution twenty-four dash through the one.
Anyone who can make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four slash thirty-one, hiring the public works crew member as discussed. I will make that motion to hire the public works crew member, regulation number twenty-four dash thirty-one. I'll call Mr. Jeff.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Okay, and our second one is seating, and you wanna, okay. Our second one seating is for the hiring of a police officer. This is for, as we discussed in executive, hiring of Officer Joshua Cummins as a police officer, probationary employee, full-time police officer, hour late, forty-five, thirty-five. And full-time would be eighty-four hours per pay period. And that would also be roughly towards the end of this month, early in the part of the new year. And that would be, yeah, early New Year. So that would be resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Anyone who can make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two for hiring a new police?
Yes.
I'll say.
I'll call Mr. Joe.
Yes.
If you don't know.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Board, thank you very much for both, happy cheaper being myself.
Anyone who can make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-seven?
I'll do that.
Do that second. Martin, Chairman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir, first of these resolutions, I'll pass those down first, we'll knock those out, then we have to check the sign. Please remember that.
I like a hot jam.
Hey, it's a little low pro and kind of rare. So they look like junior homes. He sent me a picture of Sid and Sid.
Hey, Broganer?
It's, I know. I'm sure how this, he was thinking.
Resolutions.
You wanna do it?
Um, we have a mechanic. Yeah, they all need to.
Oh, you think he's at school?
Probably. He will probably call nine months and soliciting because he doesn't need it.
Is that the one right there?
Yeah, that's most of us. Right on the corner.
Live now?
Yeah. Yeah, almost every year he calls. Yeah.
What time, what time is it?
He's there at the bottom of, like, the Uta Pines section and then it's, it's a long, it takes a while.
I'm not sure you know. I'm on Osprey.
Oh, yeah.
I think one of the first stops.
Yeah.
You love, you love the way for Rich.
Yeah.
Come back down and you go past the farm and then come back down.
Yeah, we're in the middle.
No man.
Yeah, dude, I had a meeting with, uh, Meg, Meg and Brett at EMS. Get the rest of the information for the plant, so hopefully January, maybe February, maybe February. I'm also working on this first piece of stuff, it's been taking up a lot of time. But it's still in the works.
These are all done, whatever.
See you guys later.
See you.
One more?
Yeah, one more.
See you, Rich.
Yeah, maybe. Somehow I think.
It worked, it worked.
It worked, it worked for me. Who signed on, boy? Who else can he? Oh, she was, she wasn't. Yeah, there was somebody else that signed on, so I just tried the second one, figuring at least that way it was going. Am I getting to tell their bottom? What? Well, that's because you're gonna find those doctors, they're doctors in there. Doesn't even look like Sniff.
Sturps in here.
Yeah.
Little contract in there and it just keeps signing a lot of them. Look, I don't know what to say.
Hopefully he's the person.
Uh, actually, I think he's probably getting home, I could drop it off to him, my driver's fine.
Yeah.
I'll see if he's home. I'll get it. Yeah. That's what I was looking for. What are you doing? Oh, you know, up this morning.